Good evening, meeting of the Shasberry Board of Selectmen. I'm Tony Kurlikowski, acting Chair. Called this meeting to order at 6:30. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
Everybody on the board? Approval of the minutes.
Is there a minutes in the pile there? There's only one meeting that goes back to April 16th. I sent it out on Thursday.
Right, I saw that.
It's the only one where the three of you were all.
We were all here, yes, thank you.
I can't remember that far.
I know. You were here though, Ken.
I know.
Okay. Any additions, subtracts to the minutes?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Just sign the top of the front page.
Warrant for. Let's get that one. Okay.
Uh, that's a check warrant.
Check warrant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And what is this for, Dave?
Uh, this check warrants, the page underneath will give you a list of the outstanding ones. Uh, this one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
They're right on the front page, Tony, if you just flip that.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
Uh, you have the Benton County Sheriff.
Right.
Uh, Daley's for about $7,000.
I have, yeah, Sheriff for $1,228.
Blue Cross Blue Shields in there for about $6,600.
Yeah. Uh, and we have MSK Engineering and Design.
Yeah.
For $2,602.
That was part of the garage.
Uh, TAM Services, $6,779.
That's a normal fee, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a normal, like, maximum fee.
And Daley at $11,719.
It's just a lot of material. And four, right?
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Payroll warrant. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Any announcements from the board?
Nope.
No? We have no public comments. Treasurers' report, Melanie.
We're moving right along.
We're moving right along.
Yeah.
It's hot in here.
I've seen on the news that the warmer weather makes you dumber.
I'm ready.
Slows your brain function down, so.
Yes.
We can zip through these really fast. The only thing of note here is that we got the first payment of Highway State Aid. You can see that $40,000 there. Um, a little bit of prepaid taxes. That, uh, Shasberry Elementary School tax reconciliation is the final reconciliation from the state that shows that we sent them $7,800 too much, which means they got it very close this year. That, that, sometimes we owe them more money, sometimes they owe us some, and I think one year it was like $150,000, but this year they guessed right on, so that's just a little bit of money. And then outgoing, um, nothing interesting at all. So, you can go down one, just to the bottom, you can look at the balances, so that shows you the reserve fund, and the garage bond each have almost a million.
On the page before that had the Worthington? What was that?
Oh, that was a, go back up to the top, I think that was a return check or something.
Worthington Water Works.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, that's when, um, uh, when the water department borrows a highway guy for a while.
Oh, okay, there you go, there you go.
Then they pay this. Water pays the town, so I have to sign a check to myself. That's, so that's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, there's really no, it's a sort of a silly thing, yeah, but it's just me paying, paying me, but it's to do the accounting when we, when water borrows highway. Is I saying that right?
Yeah, I mean, it's like what we were talking about before, was this an enterprise fund?
I was gonna say, yeah.
We have to charge the enterprise fund for our labor, our equipment and everything, so that's the second quarter bill for last year, for the last quarter.
I just, I wasn't familiar with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's kind of funny, because it is, he's writing checks for himself.
Yeah, but that's how it shows up.
I've been extra good this year.
Um, so, and those are just the, the balances. That garage bond, I say this every time, that's gonna start disappearing fast, but right now it's still pretty good.
Yeah, it looks good, doesn't it?
Once the work starts.
Great.
That will look so good soon. That'll disappear quickly.
Yeah.
The next one?
And we can look at the, the reserve funds too, but it's just basically water payments. Um, there's not much interesting going on. Oh, yeah, you can see there, if you look, oh, no, yeah, that happened in, I cleaned everything up in June, I probably should've showed you that, uh, for the June 30th, I did a big transfer that, to clean out all of the due-to-do froms for the end of the fiscal year, so, um, so the auditors are gonna be very happy that I took care of that on time this year. Uh, but that doesn't appear here. All you see there is basically water payments, um, down there at line, at 260 Fund. So you see all those credits and debits are zeros except for water. That's just because, uh, those are late water payments that are still coming in. Unless you have any questions about any of that, we can go on to the important thing, which is, uh, we need to get the line of credit approved at this meeting. Um, just, so, uh, to make it clear what this is, it's just to keep our cash flow in good shape before tax money starts coming in, um, which should happen, uh, probably October is gonna be when it really starts coming in. So there's, um, a point at which we run out of money, um, usually, and then we have to borrow from a line of credit. This happens every year.
When do we get the money from the state for, like, the homestead credit?
Um, we're supposed to get, have, I was supposed to have gotten a payment, um, it's not huge, but I was supposed to get one last Friday, and all the treasurers are saying, why did we get this letter saying we were gonna get it and it didn't come? Um, it's supposed to come this week. And then there's another batch will come in August 1st, but that's only 50,000, $60,000, I think, it's not, it's not a huge amount.
I would think that'd be a higher, higher amount.
Well, it comes, it comes in in several packets and, and, uh, yeah, it's not, it's not really all that much.
Well, you probably don't know off the top of your head, but what percentage of that is of this whole tax, how many tax bill?
Um, I could look that up. I know that the vast majority of people do not pay their gross, uh, tax, because the cutoff for income is pretty high.
Yeah.
Um, but I could certainly.
Well, I mean, it just, don't kid yourself doing it.
No, I mean, it's.
It'd be cut interest, know that.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, um, I mean, of, of residents, it's probably, I don't know, actually, don't even quote me, because I don't wanna guess, but it's, it's well over 50%.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, so anyway, we, last year, we didn't actually tap into it at all, because we, uh, got the tax bills out so early that the money came in early. It looks like that's not gonna happen this year because of, um, it issues with the grant list not being finalized, but, um, so what this, this is for $300,000, we may use, all of it, we may use none of it. Um, and you have to vote, uh, I mean, you can, I don't think you wanna read these resolutions, so you can just take them as read, but, which is what you've done in the past. Um, I'm gonna need you to vote on it, um, and vote on, uh, yeah, sort of whether you're gonna approve the line of credit, and then there's also, you have to agree to abide by the, uh, non-arbitrage certificate. And then I'll need you to sign pages one, three, and five as indicated.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the, uh, application for line of credit.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just for the notice for $300,000.
$300,000.
$300,000. So this first page.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hey, Mike.
How are ya?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Have a seat.
Welcome. Sit in the cool.
Well, sitting in the cool, he better go out to his car.
I know.
I don't know, it might rain.
That will help.
So below you, Melanie, or?
Uh, as indicated.
Oh, I'm bored, you did, yeah, sorry.
And then I think you also have to, um, adopt the, uh, non-arbitrage.
Arbitrage, yeah. Is that new?
No, that's always there. It's, it's basically saying we're not gonna take their money and then use it to make more money elsewhere.
We.
We have to use it only for our own ongoing business.
We used to do it with the school money.
Mm-hmm.
Use the arbitrage.
Oh, you, you.
Yeah. But it, obviously, it was legal.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Uh, they made, in the old days, when there was, the percentages were high, they made good money.
Huh.
On arbitrage, so, uh, yeah. I remember that.
You can't use borrowed money to make profit.
Yeah, the banks are like that, especially since we're doing all our banking with them, so it'd be sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Especially if you made more money than they did.
So do you need a separate motion for the arbitrage?
I think, I think, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Is that, well, that is what, for that?
It's just to promise that we won't use the money we're borrowing to invest and make more money.
Right.
So both.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Keeps you from going to Vegas.
Exactly.
With the money. You get the three pages.
I wouldn't dare do that with 20 cents of my own money. I lose every time. What I got comes to me, I had to give it to a giver. They add you wrong.
House always wins.
Something to write on. Supposed to be warmer tomorrow, I guess, what they're saying.
I thought storms might be.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice the rest of the weekend. Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I'll put him for a day off.
Yeah, I'd say Thursday, Friday's supposed to be nice.
So Melanie, did you plan a symphony, or did you?
Oh, for this. Oh, it was just two of us. We were from the symphony, the two of us just arrived and we said, the symphony has arrived.
Ooh, impressive.
Do you ever play with the same city, or not?
Well, sometimes, yeah, sometimes when they, when they need extra people.
A little backup.
That it?
Yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. I neglected to add, uh, after the town garage, we're going to talk about an MOU with Bostonbury, an appointment to the cemetery committee, and also a class action suit that we're gonna join. Okay. So, road report.
Okay, the road report, I won't make this kind of brief, uh, most of the work is gonna be going on East Road, there's 10 culverts, uh, that cross East Road that have to be replaced before the paving. Uh, the fourth one went in today, will have eight done by the end of the week, and it looks like we'll be hiring an outside contractor to assist with the last two. Um, as the board knows, one of our members was, uh, fairly badly injured in an off-duty accident, so he's gonna be gone for a while. Uh, and of course, we have the summer vacation periods coming up, so we will be running a little short again, like we did last summer, when we had an unexpected retirement and an employee taking on the job elsewhere, so, we, we have plans to make it through, and we will, but, uh, it does make things, some things take a little bit longer. Uh, the next big things, uh, will be, or most of this is gonna take place on East Road, uh, scheduled for the beginning of August, first week, the road's gonna be milled from a furnace broke to the bank and border in preparation for it being paved. The paving company's supposed to be in within a week after that, but as things get delayed, go back and forth, we're hoping to keep that schedule. Uh, we try to minimize the needs up there, but it, it does happen. It's hard to work on the roads without even being using someone. Uh, the other thing that came up is a lot of people on Perrin Road know, when you go off into Benton, it was like driving on a corduroy road. Uh, essentially, what we got was, uh, large batch of bad material, and when we graded it in, it was fine, and then it just turned to corduroy within a couple of days. We mixed in a different compound, uh, from SOR up in Wallingford last Friday. SLC, why do I always call them SOR?
Oh.
Uh, SLC up in Wallingford, and, uh, it seems to be, the Wallingford slip had a lot more fines in it, which is what the original product was missing, so we think that'll take care of that problem. The same problem occurred, we used the same material for the same batch, uh, to finish off, uh, about 21.
Trouble Hill, no?
No, not trouble either.
Courtney?
Courtney, no, well, this other road we're working, boy, that's bad.
Daniels? Wade, gets worse.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so we, we were working on that too, because it turned into kind of the same problem.
Was it the material, or was it the conditions?
It's the material.
Okay.
Uh, when, when Calder Road went to dust and kind of, kind of sunk in a bit, that was most likely from the dryness of the road. And when it was graded, uh, everything was fine, but the, you know, chloride just doesn't penetrate deep enough, so you keep churning it up, and, uh, that's why we've held off, like on, on, uh, Murphy Hill, uh, we just really chlorided that, just because it was getting extremely dusty, but if we broke it up, it wasn't going to help at all, it was just gonna make it dustier. So, um, we're holding off, this is the first main, if this rain even gets here, because I see the clouds bypassing us in every direction, but the roads definitely need some moisture before we can get back into grading again. After we finish the culverts this week, that we're gonna do on East Road, uh, we back to grading and regular maintenance stuff, uh, probably through mid-August, if not a little longer. Uh, the main projects that we have planned, uh, are the upper part of Shasberry Hollow, which has to be done by December 31st, so that is the main item on the schedule in September, other than routine maintenance. Uh, there's a few other projects, there's actually five other funded state projects that we need to do before June 30th of next year, so depending if we can work a couple in this year, we'll finish the rest before June next year.
Is that September 31st, or December?
December.
December.
Yeah. And then, of course, we have the multi-year, uh, uh, culvert project up in the hollow, which, uh, will be starting to solicit people for shortly, right, 'cause that, that has like three years to go on it, but we have to find a contractor, update all the materials and everything like that, so.
That's the hollow hideaway?
Yeah, it's the hollow hideaway, the structures grant for the hollow hideaway. I also need another year to get all the mine together, because they gave us a grant this year, but, you know, we get the grant issue, but it's good for several years, so it's not like, it's good to have it, we have a state guarantee of their end of it, now we do have to put in together some money, so, uh, but that, that would be a big problem. We're ready to go on that, and, uh, I think that's about it for the roads.
Eric and I would overlook at that, uh, where it was so dry that type.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm thinking, rather than put the chlorine to it, that wouldn't say dry, I mean, you don't have to do it all the time, but wouldn't say dry, you might wanna put the truck out, put a little water on it while you're grading.
Yeah, yeah. You know, um, yeah, I don't think it was expected to, for it to turn like that, but it's, it's just been so dry, it's almost, uh, I don't know.
You can't pack it.
Yeah, you can't, it won't, you know, you're just getting.
The truck packed dust.
Yeah, you really need, and we need some rain.
Yeah.
I mean, we really, really need some rain, because it might even be soaked in an inch or two on top, but you're going deeper than that.
If you put a little water with it, the chlorine would better take.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
'Cause the chlorine myself can't do it.
Yeah, no, no.
So we're working with, what, three or four road crew?
Uh, right now, we have four.
Okay.
Uh, next week, and for the following four weeks, we will be down to three.
Yeah, so we're.
We're in the same, what we were in last year, due to injuries and, and people leaving.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're back down again to three.
Which just sort of adds more.
You know, it, it adds to the scheduling issues, uh, but we can switch everybody now to maintenance, we can bring the maintenance up, it's just, uh, you know, we have to watch the timing of each project.
Yeah.
The one we're getting caught on this time is, uh, when we drop to a three-man crew, we'll use one member of our crew to work with the private company, so we're supervising the installation of it.
Good, yeah.
But, I mean, we need equipment operators, I've been soliciting, uh, B-Trans garages and, uh, everybody we know, anybody, I mean, ex-workers I've gone to, retirees, going, I need someone.
I know.
You can sit in the air and listen to Bob all day and just dig the holes, you don't even need somebody to do something, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we are gonna solicit a, a few of the excavators tomorrow and just say, you know, who can do, there's only two we need to finish.
Yeah.
And once they're out of the way, that was the only, uh, non-maintenance project planned for July, and August, we're gonna bump a couple of things back, so we can recalibrate here a little bit, and then, uh, pick them up later. But, you know, with a little planning, a little foresight, we can get around it.
I know.
Yeah.
When did you say they're gonna grade up East Road?
Uh, it's scheduled for the first week in August, and that seems to be a pretty hard date, uh, Peckham's gonna do that part of it. They have a subcontract from, from Springfield, so.
Uh, I was over there this morning, I think, where you put the culverts and the jury got in, you may wanna watch him, Dave, 'cause they're gonna settle.
Oh, yeah, they are sinking already.
Yeah, so you just want to maybe keep.
Yeah, we'll just keep putting a little bit more on to pound them in.
Yeah, okay.
But the good thing is, uh.
'Cause that'll get rough after a while.
Yeah, we wanna get them done early, even earlier than this, uh, because, yeah, they compact as cars keep going over, they're settling them in.
I don't care how good you pack them.
Yeah, oh, no, no, they'll always settle in. If we get a good rain, it might settle a little more.
Yeah.
We'll keep a little, a little.
Just keep an eye on it, it'll be all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we put the bump signs up and the road construction signs too, because people drive, as they do on every road, too fast.
Yeah, but that one's a little faster than usual.
Yeah, no, it's a very fast road.
They're like, 50 miles an hour is nice up in there.
Yeah, not when you hit eight of those in a row.
They'll slow down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that's, that's about it, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. Town garage.
Back to me again.
And transfer, yeah, sorry, transfer, yeah.
Uh, things are moving along according to plan, uh, we were pretty much on schedule. The main controversy now is, uh, a change with the salt shed. Uh, the, everything was submitted through Clearspan for the certain type of structure, they came back suddenly needing, uh, different kind of blocks, 20 more buttresses, and about $30,000 more dollars to do all this, which has kind of put everybody in a, in a bind here. Now, uh, we have alternative structures that, that, uh, our contractor Russell has built, which are, are good structures and comparable. The issue that we're kind of going around in is the, uh, the warranty on them, however, there's even issues with the warranty, and some people are calling like Clearspan more a sales thing than anything else, because this type of material, they haven't been in business for 50 years, and, you know, so there's a whole bunch of controversy around it, so we're trying to work our way through to see, uh, what the best deal is here, because, uh, they didn't, like, you know, the originals are not what this is turning into.
It's quite a difference.
It's a huge difference.
Yeah, it was quite a difference when I read it, yeah.
Yeah, and as I said, you know, going from eight buttresses to needing 28, it's like, how did you?
How did you do that?
How'd you do that?
Yeah.
And now you need another row of blocks originally, they accepted the regular blocks, now, which we wanted anyway, was interlocking blocks, so the whole thing is just.
Yeah.
But this is something that our engineers and Russell are working with, just keeping the board a prize on, because, uh, we'll have to make a decision at some point.
I thought they gave us a price like that, a set price.
I thought it was solid.
Well, if, if we, if we, no, there, there's issues that, that are contractual, that, uh.
There's always a variable there, but.
Yeah, yeah, but the variable is, is more than a reasonable variable.
Yeah.
You know, nothing, nothing's in stone to a certain extent, and then there's, there's alternates out here of comparable products, that is basically, it's a, it's a, it's a frame of cloth on it, you know, so it's, it's more, less, what, what's the biggest bang we're gonna get for a buck here? Uh, and.
Well, it costs almost four times more, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's a lot of bang. It's, it's a, a lot, lot extra.
Yeah.
That is, is coming to play here, and there are certain things we can go back and forth on, uh, kind of what you're saying is that, well, the contract is for this, and we could theoretically just try and hold to that, but they have comebacks too, that the original, uh, things that were put in, they've changed so much that.
So we started out comparing apples to apples, and where are we now? Lemons and oranges?
Well, one apple is far, needs far more.
Ripening.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, basically, yeah, it is, it is apples to apples.
Yeah.
The structure is, uh, gonna be essentially the same. Uh, the only difference now is that the alternate that we're talking about, Calhoun, is, is nearly $30,000 cheaper.
Is it equivalent?
Yes, according to the engineers and everybody, it's equivalent. The, the question is only, uh, you have an email about it.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, is really only over, 'cause I asked about the warranty, and the warranty for the Calhoun is shorter, but Calhoun is very much verbal about how the warranty actually means something.
Have they ever had to wa, to honor a warranty?
Calhoun?
Yeah.
Uh, I could find out.
That's what I would like to see.
I'm, I'm sure they had, but, uh, one thing I can tell you is, is, uh, Clearspan has never had to honor their 50-year one, because they haven't been in business that long.
Right, that's right.
So.
Was that part?
This is back to the pipes again, you know?
Yeah, yeah, the unknown.
Was that part of the contract, did Russell for that, or was that a separate contract?
The, the salt shed, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But again, like I said, there's points to this, there's, you, we had a proposal that they took, they brought up to Clearspan, that was based on what we were told, and now, as their engineers are putting it together, they're saying that, no, we need 20 more buttresses for this thing. we need 20 more buttresses for this thing. Now, whether that's, whose mistake that is, I don't know. But on the other hand, there's an alternative out there that Russell's built that, it's another, it's Clearspan by another name, it's Calhoun. Iron Horse is actually behind Calhoun, so, you know, it's one of their combined structures, and it does the same thing, and it's.
Are the specifications for the block that everything say?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the funny thing is that, you know, we honored the interlocking blocks, because at some point, someone's going to hit the wall.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't, you want the blocks to be linked together. That seems straightforward to me. I don't understand why there was a mystery in this. But again, kind of what's been implied by the different engineers on all sides is that you have to expect when the construction documents, the final documents are being prepared, when the engineers are going to put their stamps on, they'll change some things. Now, you'd have to get into the whole contractual argument, is this change by Clearspan so excessive that we should hold onto the original? Or, you know, we'd be going back and forth, and then are we going to bog down over where we want this tent or this tent, because we're just building a tent over salt and sand?
And Russell's the one that does the arguing.
Oh, Russell was the one who was arguing. I'm just explaining, we were on the sideline of this. It's between our engineers, who are protecting us.
Yes.
And Russell, who's negotiating with the builders.
Yeah.
With the fires. So, you know, this is just for them to hammer around.
It's a tangled web.
Yeah, it is, it is. Well, the good news, everything in the building is flowing along right. We've made some, some small changes to create some 220 outlets for things and change the ventilation system a little bit. But that's really going along fine, that's pretty straightforward.
We decided on the color. We had decided that color.
We had decided on the color. I sent back to them, I went back to the original Morton thing, and I sent them the pictures. I said, "The colors are the Rupert Building."
Yeah.
That's the colors. And, you know, I said, because we had voted on the color.
Right, a year ago.
Yeah, a year ago.
Yeah.
I said, "These are the colors. Tell Morton we want the Rupert Building, the Rupert colors. That's what everybody voted on, except not the white doors, they'll be off-white."
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I haven't gotten the specifics back on that, but that's what it was. It's pretty straightforward. We want the Morton Building in Rupert, that's what we're looking for. And everything else has gone along fairly well with that. We haven't really had any serious issues with the building. You know, it's still in the final design phase, but that's all within the budgets, nothing's going to go wrong.
What does the estimated start date go?
The same as it always was, which is in August. I mean, you know, the project is well on their way.
Right, no, I meant.
But the building itself.
Building itself.
The, you know, the building, I believe, I'd have to check if it's downstairs, but I believe the building's supposed to arrive in August.
So they break around in August and start building? Should be quick.
Yeah, well, the building.
They have it in force, in September.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Which is making me think I might have a long moment. Maybe the building's coming in September or something like that.
I thought you were saying August.
I didn't think it was in August, too, yeah. But I'd have to look, I have it downstairs, I don't remember off the top of my head. But we're on schedule. It's underway.
Excellent.
Yeah. I can put up with the transfer station the way it is for a couple more weeks, but.
Any problems?
You know, I think people have adjusted to it. It's just, you know, cuts down on the conversation time, and you just have to kind of move it along so that people can keep flowing through.
Yeah, I mean, that's tough.
Yeah, it is, it is, but, you know, there's no other way to do this. Because I looked into making it offsite, I wanted to just put it back here.
Yeah, but no.
And they were like, wow, nobody's ever asked us for that. And I was like, so I guess I'm not getting it.
No.
If DDC never did it before, I didn't think I was going to get it, so.
No, we don't do anything.
So it's a little inconvenient, but at the end of the day, this will all work out, so. And it won't be much longer.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're hankering to start knocking down the other buildings.
Yeah.
Because the big site work is getting the rest of the place ready. So I think they all want to move on, you know, they don't want to be wasting their time there. Craig has a lot of equipment there, and he'd like to move it somewhere else, I'm sure, as soon as he can.
You're not making money when it's shut off.
You're not making money when it's sitting there, no.
That's right.
So do you think we're going to have a salt shed this year? That'll give us help?
Oh, the salt shed will be up. Oh, yeah, the salt shed is definitely going to be up. Actually, you know, and we will have salt and sand in it for the winter. Can't seem why not, unless something goes wrong. We will still start the piles here, but unless there's some big thing goes wrong in the cycle.
Unless winter comes next month.
Yeah, unless winter comes in November this year, which is possible, then.
Could be, could be September.
Yeah.
We'll take it.
We'll take it.
No, we won't.
Well, that's it for the roads for tonight.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Uh, do you want to talk about the, was it MOU, MOU or is MOA?
It's an MOU. It's the memorandum of standing between the town of Shaftesbury and the organized town, unorganized town, sorry, of Glastonbury. Every two years, we enter into this agreement. It basically allows any Glastonbury resident to use the Shaftesbury Transfer Station. They have to buy the same access stickers, pay the same fees. They have the use and benefit of Shaftesbury's municipal services, which is the parks, polling place, fire department, and without being charged a fee. Either town may terminate the memorandum for any cause. The agreement shall be reviewed no later than July 1st, 2020. And Glastonbury shall contract with the state of Vermont to provide Glastonbury's sole expense with their maintenance for that portion of the Glastonbury Road line within the town of Shaftesbury. From time to time, Shaftesbury will provide Glastonbury with their maintenance, something like that. But that means that part of the agreement is they pay the state to plow to the very end of the Glastonbury Road.
Right.
So it's the same agreement, not a word's been changed, it's the one we did two years ago, and no words changed from the one we did two years before that. So the board just needs a motion and.
Need a motion.
So both.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
How did they come up with that, turn around at the end of that road?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Oh, okay.
I'd just sign right here.
Yes.
Yep.
So Ricky's still in charge.
Yes.
Yes.
The cemetery committee has asked for the board's approval to appoint a new member. I don't have much information on, her name is Peggy Wilson.
She's a retired teacher from.
Yeah, she's a retired teacher, as well, I understand. So you probably know more about her than I do. So they would like to appoint her to the cemetery committee.
Do I have a motion?
So both.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And one last thing. Kane County, Utah, has filed a federal lawsuit against the government for failing to pay all the pilot funds that they would do. And we were invited to join this class action lawsuit, because we have federal lands in town. We wouldn't have downside to join this. We just need the board's approval to be the contact person, file the paperwork, and at some point, I don't know if anybody's been involved in the class action lawsuit, but you just find out what happens later on. It may be, you know, $10, and maybe $10,000, who knows, by the time they settle. There's hundreds of pages of this that they sent me, which.
So what was the suit for?
Kane County, Utah, which also has lots of federal lands.
Yeah.
They had calculated how much the pilot program, which is payment in lieu of taxes, that the federal government's supposed to have given them for their federal lands. They discovered that it was miscalculated, and there was a time where it appears that it was miscalculated. So it's a huge lawsuit involving many, many communities around the United States that have federal lands. And it's now the court of federal claims, and the settlement will be arranged. And if we file, we will be part of the settlement.
Okay. Does that make it right, though? I mean, have we been affected by anything as far as? Well, it's money doers.
Yeah.
And it's money that is.
By, yeah, by the government basically owning the federal, owning this land.
Right.
We're denied tax proceeds at municipalities. So the payment in lieu of taxes is meant to compensate towns for the government, you know, using the land.
It's made bad.
It's very, it's very common, you know, in a lot of town, like Sunderland is a good example, 86% of the town is in the national forest. And we have no development rights, so we're basically stuck unless we get some money from them.
Woodford's another.
Woodford's in Oakland.
Yeah.
And out west is, you know, with BLA lands, there's thousands of communities that basically depend on pilots. So if there's a miscalculation here, and I probably can't, you know, give the whole description, but.
Let's roll the dice and see what happens.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can't go wrong. It's either we'll, you know, I'll spend 50 cents on a stamp, and we'll get 48 cents back, or we'll get more back, so.
We won't get a bill for overpaying them, will we?
No, I doubt that. We don't pay anything, so.
Oh, okay.
If there's a trial, we don't have to attend.
That's good. And the court lawyer.
They've already signed an agreement on the amount of underpayments in fiscal 15 and 16, and they anticipate an agreement for fiscal 17. The amounts haven't been decided yet. And given that this is national, who knows, this could be nothing.
Years. That's what you say, it could be $10 bucks, could be a penny, $10,000.
Could be anything. Doesn't hurt to fill it out, Melanie.
Do I have a motion?
So both.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is it a postpaid envelope?
No, they do say.
Cheap.
It's a cheap law firm, hopefully they'll pay.
Yeah, they get a third. We don't want to.
I'm sure they'll do very well.
Yeah, it's like the mezopil, you know, yeah.
I'm not too concerned about the law firm as well.
Yeah, I'm not worried either. Anything else?
I have nothing else, and I don't do any.
We have no action items?